Yeah, or when you like.
All right, we'll call anything to order. Roll call. Here, I'm sorry to hear you. David.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
And I'm also here, and he has been primarily no sister Chuck. Please try me the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to 2B, do I volunteer to read the mission statement?
Sure. The Montmorehead Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Rob. Moving on to 2, 3A is presentable. Approval of the agenda. We are going to move the SRO action items up to 4.6. Correct? So, may I be just...
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 2B, approval of September 3 regular minutes. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 3, 3A is school news.
Good evening, board members. It's nice to see you here in such a dedicated audience to be out here this evening. Much of our school news will really be reserved to the good work being done with our school goals this year. I would be remiss, however, if I didn't recognize Our Lady Vikings, who on Saturday were a powerhouse, and they don't come up and see any part of that volleyball match. It was our invitational. How'd they do coming against the number-one seeded Edgewood?
They might have just, you know, did pretty well and won the whole thing. Be Edgewood 2-0 and didn't even take them to a third place, so it was pretty fun.
And I think there are a lot of big, wide-eyed, saucered folks who are looking around and seeing this great, beautiful facility. So, again, we extend our note of gratitude for our community for offering such a beautiful, broken order area for our students and community.
All right, other school news? All right, we'll move on to 3B, citizens' comments. We have K.W. Bocken. Mr. Bocken. Welcome.
Is that okay? Can you hear me? I'm far close enough. I'm here tonight because I've got a couple of things I'd like to say about the Driftless Area Community School that has been discussed and researched in detail. When I sat on your side of the table, I attended five school board conventions, and each year that I went, I was intrigued by the presentations put on by the Wisconsin Innovative Schools Network, WISN, and Wisconsin Charter School Association, WCA. I took away from those advice from experienced educators that simply says, "One size doesn't fit all," and that's why they are enthusiastic about charter schools. Because in any given classroom, there might be one student that's not hung up on what they're learning, but how they're learning. And charter schools are sometimes the answer to that. They're not perfect, and not 100% the act, not the answer. But two years ago, Wisconsin received a $95 million grant, $95 million grant two years ago, to establish Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools, LPRCCS. Last month, I was fairly to attend their workshop in Schofield, and I was surrounded by forward-thinking educators and administrators who are enthusiastic about the role charter schools have within their public schools. And I learned a lot about what charter schools are and what charter schools are not. Charter schools are not something for the privileged few. They're something for everybody. And again, they address the answer that one size does not fit all. Now, here locally, Ms. Lori Mittum, who I've known since she was a baby, has done a lot of research and homework on this, and she has come up with pre-approved $900,000 grant to establish a charter school here in Montmorehead. At the time that I sat where you're sitting, we also had district administrators that often had reminded us, Scott, didn't you remember, that a dollar is a dollar? And as much as we often disagreed, we all had agreed on that, that a dollar is a dollar. And as I understand it, and be correct me if I'm wrong, the conditions placed on the Driftless Area Community School will cause us to become ineligible for that $900,000. And that's something I think the taxpayers have a right to weigh in on. So, I hope you will consider going with this charter school and see if it works. There's a risk. It might not work. But I am convinced that the Wisconsin Innovative Schools Network and Wisconsin Charter Schools Association have practiced code on the fact that one size doesn't fit all in public education. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. All right, moving, I'm sorry, are there other citizens' comments? Other citizens' comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to 4A, personal transactions.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agendas, or anything anybody would like to pull up?
Well, she took first, and now to the latter.
Sir.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will now skip to 7A, consideration of school resource officer exploratory committee.
Well, good evening, board members. Once again, we're grateful to have our committee from our School Resource Officer Exploratory Committee here in the audience this evening. While I just quickly take a moment to pull up our presentation, I'd ask if those members could find their way to one of the two microphones. This is used, by the way, just for our ability to capture your voices for the video system. Our School Resource Officer Committee Exploratory Committee was established as a result of a listening session the board held back in, I want to say, late April or so. And at that time, we were encouraged to develop an exploratory committee for the purposes of seeing whether or not there could be a fit for our school district. And what you see here today is a cross-section of people throughout our community, students, parents, employees, folks from the village, who have spent a great deal of time researching with us, what are the best practices in school resource officers, and whether or not we even need to have a school resource officer. So, I'm going to close their names here, and we've kind of got a little PowerPoint presentation we'd like to share with you tonight. We apologize in advance, not everybody could be here this evening. This is now our second presentation of two. We visited with the village about September 4, right? Or thereabouts? And we're eager to share with you the results of that visit with the village. But before we do that, we just want to provide just a little bit of background on the role of that committee. So, Nick Owen, my colleague from the village, is going to help us here with the scope of our work. Good evening, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Sorry, Nick, before you start, can we just have everybody introduce themselves?
Brian Johnson, Department of Education Services.
Matt Owen, Village Administrator.
Jeff Fowles, Police Chief.
Ally Gudrun, Junior National Student.
Emma Gudrun, I'm also a junior. Big support, also a junior.
Kim Tucker, Administration Assistant.
Danny Greif, School Work. Thank you.
So, we had the idea for several years about doing this SRO position approach to school. And as you remember, you guys had a community listening session that had a lot of good ideas out there. And from there, Chief and I met with Steve and Brian to kind of go over what were the basics, what we need to do, what are the next steps. And we formed this task force based, you know, to go through the items, see what worked, what didn't work, and we did a good amount of research. We were tasked with some homework, I guess, the educator and Steve never dies. But we reviewed the Board of Education, the listening session we had, the research articles, they're both positive, what works, what doesn't work, and the negative, what to watch out for, and really identified what we want this position to be.
So, Chief, I think you're going to help us better understand, along with Maggie, what's the need for an SRO? Maggie, you want to go first?
Sure. So, the first question we really discussed was, what is the need for an SRO? And we came back to it several times in our explorations. And from a student perspective, there's definitely been an increase in physical violence and drug use in our high school. And along the lines of violence, more than just school fights, a concern amongst some students, something that has unfortunately become common in our current world, is the possibility of a school shooting. And recently in school, we've been having practice drills to know how to react in such a situation. However, having an SRO would mean being more proactive if such situations were terrorized. And also, an SRO would build relations with students, giving them someone to trust, and therefore be able to feel safer.
And so, along those lines of proactive role of a school resource officer, we have spent a lot of time talking about what that could mean, not just at the high school, but throughout our entire school system. This would be a district-wide SRO, is that right, Chief? Correct.
Well, first of all, I'm going to ask you to kind of bear with me a little medical condition at the end of last week, because it kind of left me a little messed up for a while, so it's going to get better, but it might take a while, so I might not be as particular as I hoped to be. Yeah, like she already mentioned, we've got some issues that we hope don't get serious, more serious than they have been, but they have been addressed in the past, where there's been students threatening, harming staff and other students during a permanent building. All these are certainly concerns that we take very seriously. The next slide will show that we respond about 150 times a year to the school district buildings, and some of those are really minor issues, like truancy tickets, it takes a minute or two to deal with and resolve. Others are more serious, they can take a couple of weeks to resolve, a serious investigation, sexual assault, or a specific threat, harassment, that type of thing. So, what we do with those 150 cases a year is certainly reactive work. We're called here, we deal with a situation that can take minutes, days to deal with, and then we, you know, our work is done. We either resolve it with no action taken, or municipal ordinance taken, or referred up to the DA's office, depending on severity and incident. It would be really nice, from our perspective, if you'd be more proactive and have a relationship with the students and the teachers and the administration staff, so they could approach us prior to the situations blowing up, and we could, again, take a proactive approach in resolving them before legal action, but after we take the meeting, it's going to be, every year, to be involved in the criminal justice system. One of the concerns that we heard was, again, increased property checks, drug incidents, a lot of these that happened in the community come back to the school. It's going to be assumed, a lot of times in the district, that's involved in a lot of these cases. In most cases right now, if there's a fight on school grounds, we usually, if charges are necessary, we'll usually go to disorderly conduct versus a battery, give a little bit of length to it out. But those do go to municipal court and to the DA's office on a somewhat regular basis. Truancy tickets are municipal, and other complaints that we receive are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. But again, being able to be proactive and deal with those situations ahead of that maybe negative action taking place on part of the students would allow us to be resolved without having the system involved, so.
We've heard this statement before, haven't we, Chief?
Right. One of the concerns I heard from the group as we had these meetings was arresting people. And I'm not going to say that's not the goal of some police departments, but it's never been the goal of this department in my administration or the previous administrations, so going back about 40 years, it has not been the goal of this department to arrest people. We'd rather correct action without taking arrest, arrest, without arresting people. If we can resolve an issue with verbal warning or a municipal ordinance ticket, something like that, we would much rather do that than take people to jail for a variety of issues. But if we can start small and gradual enforcement action taken as appropriate, we'd rather do that than just escalate to the top and take people to jail and arrest them. We don't do that now, we don't plan on doing that.
I think what we're trying to ensure is that our schools are a sanctuary for our students, and that only in the most egregious of actions on the parts of our students would we ask for additional assistance from our school resource officer, not for disorderly kinds of conduct, kinds of behaviors. And I guess the best way to support that statement is to demonstrate what we've done so far. And so, I'm grateful to Brian Johnson and Emma Gudrun, who are going to help walk us through these next couple of steps here. Are the district's corrective responses up to this point?
Yeah, so one of the big things that we've done within the past three years is when you really look at our expulsion data. So, within the last three years, we've had zero expulsions as a district. We've moved more towards free expulsion, agreements, conferences, and ban proceedings. So, we're avoiding having to go through the toll of the family and the student. It's always hard for everyone involved. Being able to look at those agreements, we more wraparound services, can we get them counseling? Can we get them extra services? What can that look like? And then look at our services that we're providing them and try to ramp that up, more positive connections, more trust in our system and within the leadership of the buildings. And it also saves school district liberties as well as families, but I kind of say it's us that holds it. But it's really about how can we look at a plan of support for the kid and the family, and not just coming through with significant consequences that really affect students for the rest of their lives.
All right, so another thing we've been doing is increasing mental health initiatives within the district, such as building bridges and partnerships with Catholic charities, providing clinical and service coordinators, and family counseling for families within the district. And there's data showing that that has had a positive impact on our community and really has been helping people. There's also been a lot of improving student voice, and just in every way that we can, the administration helped students to help plan the walkout against gun violence in 2018. There was a student wellness committee formed to help bring ideas about mental health to the administration and just ways we can improve on that front. We've had lots of feedback sessions for SROs, including ones that were meant to involve students, and we've had equity discussions, PR training within the school, and we've had the, where we, voter bee and WA SC leadership trainings. We've increased social workers within schools to be on par with other districts of a similar size. And we partnered with Oregon Mental Health Services to provide private onsite counseling for students within the district regardless of income levels.
Well, you make us proud, just standing here tonight to share all those kinds of things. You have been instrumental in much of this, and we could not do it without your leadership. Thank you so much. And our work is not done yet on the corrective front, isn't that right, Danny?
That is true. So, as Chief said, the goal is not to have more arrests, the goal is to prevent and de-escalate. And so, we recognize that while having an SRO within the district is an important part of the equation, the other part of the equation that continues to be really important is that we continue to attend the mental health needs of our students and continue to make sure that our district as a community continues to be, or that we continue to work on it being an inclusive one. So, other ideas that we looked at, we've noticed or have observed that oftentimes coming into a new district can be hard. And so, we want to make sure that new students are being given every chance possible to integrate into their new communities. We talked about enhancing some, putting in place some mentoring for kids that are new to the district. We're going to continue to work with district-wide, our district-wide safety committee, and then that also extends to, you know, we have a safety and wellness committee that's part of our board, the Montmorehead Mental Health and Wellness Coalition is something that we're going to continue to work with. Our students have a wellness committee. So, there are a lot of good people doing really good work, and we just want to make sure that everyone continues to row in the same direction and that all these groups and committees and organizations are continuing to work together. We're going to continue training for staff. We now have STAT, which is student to teacher advisory time, yes. So, trying to increase and enhance the amount of time that students have one-on-one with faculty and staff. And then continuing to keep our eye on our well-being goals as part of each building's goals within the district as it dovetails with the district's overall strategic plan.
Thank you for that. And so, we came to consensus around late July as a team, that are these interventions, these corrective steps enough? And by consensus, the team felt like an SRO would be an appropriate recommendation to make to both of the village and to this school board. And there were certain must-haves that we thought that after researching the most effective SRO programs, we needed to include. And so, I'm thankful that we have an overview of those. And I see two of our partners who are unable to be here tonight, Mr. Bledsoe and Mrs. Grundle, they sent their regrets, but maybe if you don't mind me just talking through a couple of these items here on the slide deck. The first of which is, the partnership between the school district and the police department is really limited to information that's on a need-to-know basis. We found that the most effective organizations were able to differentiate what information should and could be shared. And I think when we heard Chief say to us at one of our meetings, "Hey, all I need is a roster of the kids who go to school here. I don't need to know other information pertinent to their grades or their discipline record." If our goal is truly to help kids be successful and find interventions to help them, then, and I'm kind of the last resort, so to speak, as a model of support, then that's really all I need. And we're bound by confidentiality. Our confidentiality is our bond to our community, and what we share with people is also one of the key fundamental pieces of our must-haves. And you can see a couple of others of them. I also want to go on record and publicly to state the importance of involving parents in the event that there's a matter involving a student and it requires any kind of quote-unquote "investigation" that would require, some people call it interrogation, or having the individual be morandized, parents, like they always have been, would be encouraged to be a part of those discussions. And we see our parents as a partner in our continued support of our kids in making good choices. Now, the next set of must-haves, that was going to be covered by Shannon, but she could not be here tonight, so Brian, I think you've got this one, right?
So, we talked about some of the things that have always been in place, but would continue to be in place for the SRO. So, if a search would ever need to take place, a locker, a backpack, then all the same standards are still in place. So, reasonable suspicion and probable cause standards still would be continued to be on there. We also talked a lot as a group that we want to look at the data, we want to look at the numbers, look to see how things are going. If we see huge spikes in tickets being issued, huge spikes in arrests at the school, like any of that stuff, we want to know about it and be able to talk about it and have those discussions immediately. So, regularly monitoring the results and determining our must-haves, and then make sure that those are being met as well. The other thing about continuing, right, when we're having safety inspections within our schools, that's something that I'll be talking to the chief about as soon as this meeting's over, about walking through each of our buildings, right? Where are we weak? What are our needs? What do we need to continue to look at? So, we can continue to look at recommendations for facility improvements, but also little things to make us aware to make our buildings safer for kids. And then we also want the SRO to be on our district safety committee for purposes of how can we improve our practice and development and continue to get better.
Good evening, Ally. Would you help us to understand a couple more of those key must-haves?
For sure. Moving back to some of the conversations that I heard going on in April, especially at the community listening session, we actually were fortunate to have an SRO from a different district come in and talk about a little bit of what he does and his relationship with students. And I think one of the things that I heard a lot was, people were impressed by how approachable he was, how passionate he was about students. And actually, he kind of reminded me of Mr. Clark, I know he should have hired, but kind of the power of having someone approachable in the halls, who knows your name, who says hi sometimes. And as unfortunate as it is, some people do find the full police dress to be a little bit intimidating. So, for that reason, just to build positive relationships, we thought it was important in our committee that the SRO would be in plainclothes with obviously a badge, and then often either a district or a police logo on their clothing. So, still that connection to the police and the district in a way that's not intimidating for students. And we talked about, maybe diversifying that too, when they're talking to younger kids, about, you know, seatbelt safety, bike safety, things like that, having them in full dress just so that the kids can see that and get excited about that and build positive relationships. But on a day-to-day basis, having someone that the students can relate to was really important to us.
You've got this next slide.
Yes, I do. And another thing that I heard talked about a lot was the role of an SRO as a counselor and mentor, although that's not their prime responsibility, we do have super awesome advisors. Being trauma-informed and being able to connect to students in a positive way, especially because of the inherent role of SRO and police in general coming into students' lives at a really difficult time sometimes, it was really important to us that that was someone who was aware of drug use and like very young kids and adults at mindset, mental health issues, things like that, just so that that experience is a positive one.
Thank you for that. And one of the pieces that I learn things from kids all the time, and one of the pieces that I thought was so important that the Gudrun sisters have shared with us is the importance of making certain that we're also being respectful of the diversity needs of our students, both not just from socioeconomic, racial, but also a special education need. And we had some really good conversation around that. You've impressed us so very much throughout this entire process. In fact, board members, I'm excited, we have lunch with Ally on Thursday to see if maybe she wouldn't mind being a student member of our board. She is on our student council, and as you can tell, is a wonderful representative of our students. So, thank you so much for the nice job you've done here today. But I digress, let's continue along. The look for us, Mrs. Tucker, if we were going to hire somebody as a school resource officer, what would we be looking for in that person?
Well, there's just a couple key points that we all discussed as a group. Of course, ability to work with in groups, respect for all ages, strong communication skills, you know, public speaking, being approachable to all of our students. One big main point that I'd like to say for, in this setting, is when we were presenting to the village, a big look for is to have that right fit. I know that primarily the SRO, everybody focuses on a high school. I think it's really important, and so do we all, to find that fit, to make the kindergartners, the PC, the IC, to have that connection. And that's really important to all of us, that it is a school-wide district look for, for this right fit for this SRO to bring into our kids. It has to start little, so go big.
Thank you. And so, we found in our research, this decision-making checklist, if you're like me, you're wondering, well, Chief, how do we know when we call in a school resource officer? Every situation's going to be different, but as a general rule of thumb, these six criteria might run through the minds of our fellow administrative colleagues as well as our school resource officer. One thing that was clear amongst our team members was that we really felt that the SRO should be taking directive from, at least at the site-based level, from school administration. It'd be very easy to have an SRO being ping-ponged by people who are well-intentioned and wanting to support kids at school, maybe a teacher or a staff member telling an SRO, "I really need you to be doing X, and you need to be doing Y," and then we start to spread that person too thin. And so, we think that in order to prioritize the needs of our students and make certain that we're not having the SRO supplant the work of an administrator, but rather supplement the work of an administrator, that it be done through the administrative team. And so, you have these six different criteria that we would be asking ourselves, and along the way, we kind of began to... And along the way, we kind of began to realize that we need to establish a system of protocols or what we call standard operating procedures. You have, of course, board policy, you have administrative reg, and then how you actually carry out the important work of the board's wishes is through day-to-day protocols. And this would be an example of one part of a protocol that our team would be working collaboratively on in order to differentiate the role of a school resource officer in addressing a matter involving a student and/or a family. But we didn't go too far down the road on this because we felt like if there wasn't support from the village, there wasn't support from the Board of Education, then maybe we will have done that work for naught. Rest assured, if the board did see suit to continue this important work, we would be looking to put together a more detailed standard operating procedure or protocol for the team's efforts. And to that end, if the board were to approve tonight, Chief, may I put you on the spot and ask you a question? That is, what could be the possible timeline to bring somebody on board?
Yeah, the timeframe would involve the selection process and hiring of an officer and then training the officer that's going to replace the person that eventually will go in the schools and may be considered for the SRO program once they're completely trained. So it's about a three-month process to get somebody hired on board and about another three months to get them putting on the streets. So about six months from the date that I get to go ahead to start hiring process, about six months after that, the SRO could be in place, but probably not sooner, maybe a week or two.
One of the pieces that's teased out in the draft memorandum of understanding, which you'll find in the board docs and is out there for the public's review, is how that person would be brought on board. And I'm so thankful that we have a village, a police chief, a team that's working to work shoulder to shoulder in order to help with that selection process. And so if I could take a moment to pivot us to that part of the presentation tonight and answer any questions you may have about the actual memorandum of understanding. Logistically speaking, we're looking at, yeah, team, please make yourselves at home. By the way, great job tonight. We might need you for a minute for a couple of questions, but in the interim, let us just quickly dust off that memorandum of understanding. The partnership would be 50/50% partnership. We're proposing, as you heard through one of the slides, that this would be something to continually monitor. This is not a one-and-done conversation. We really feel like if you're going to invest these kinds of resources, we need to continue to have this person be a part of ongoing discussions, not just with district-wide safety committee, but ongoing evaluative tools. What are the data sets that help us determine whether or not we're having a positive impact on our students? And so we're proposing an agreement that would start on or about January 1st of this year and would extend through June 30th of 2022, which is about a two-and-a-half-year period. This person would be an employee of the Mount Borah Police Department, not that of the school district of Mount Borah. And that's important because the person who would be directing the workflow of this individual would be the chief of police in consultation for evaluative purposes with school administration. The hours of work would be typically your Monday through Friday. Understanding there would be times in which we're going to ask this individual to make themselves available in the evenings for events, maybe even Saturday evenings at events like dances and the like, and that we would work through that such to avoid any kind of overtime that would often get involved in that. But wouldn't it be great to have an SRO who knows the kids at a football game or when we beat Wannakee at a basketball game or something like this? The other piece that we thought was important is to be transparent as possible, and we alluded to this a little bit earlier with regard to what that person's dress would be like. You may remember the officer was here from Cambridge a couple of months back. He was dressed in a very casual, I think, in a sweater vest and a pair of khakis, but he also had on his badge, and he had a weapon, but it was concealed. And that's what we want. We wanted to be concealed, not something that's threatening, something that would help students feel more engaged with their school resource officer, not someone who would feel threatened in any way. Then lastly, the kinds of services that would be provided, you'll see on page three, these are some of the things that the team thought were most important in their work. This is not an all-inclusive list, but I think captures very nicely in a snapshot what are those items that we think we can have the greatest impact by bringing a school resource officer on board. This is not somebody who helps with academic counseling, but you know what? I have found in my experience that many a times, school resource officers are the people that the kids come to to talk to about almost anything. And this person would have to feel comfortable in their own skin to be able to say, I can help you with this, or I don't know the answer to that, but let me direct you to a guidance counselor who could help you and the like. And then lastly, we talked a little bit about pupil records and their access to pupil records. We wanted to memorialize within this memorandum of understanding of what that goal should be. So we realized in the past still 30 minutes or so, we've thrown a lot your way, and that's only because we've done a lot of work in order to get to this point. And I want to extend a note of gratitude to all my friends and colleagues who've been a part of that committee. I think we've been able to really make great inroads, and we respectfully ask for any questions you may have and your consideration of our recommendations.
Okay, I'll go first. I have a few questions on the MOU. Okay, so the emergency situation clause, if there is an emergency situation, do we then say they have to be out a month or whatever it is? Will then the absence clause kick in or no? Because it's an emergency clause, and if that's the case, do we still split that month 50/50? How would that work?
Great question. We know that anyone who's integral to the success of our organization, when they're gone, it creates for lapse in our ability to get the job done. But we also recognize that there are times in this important work that the SRO might need to be gone. And so when that happens, we'd like to have somebody who can fill in if it exceeds the timeframe that's listed here in the MOU.
And would that person be trained as an SRO or is it just an officer filling the space?
I think our goal would be to have somebody who has a working knowledge of the SRO experience. Obviously, they're not going to have the full range of training that the SRO that we're investing in this person would have, but nonetheless, we're there to help them during that time. I can count on my hand the number of times where, on one hand, in the 27 years of an administration, that we've had to have somebody coming in to fill in the SRO, but I'm confident we can get to a really good spot with that.
I think I have maybe more.
Please.
In the cost standard, so we would share 50/50 of the school year, right? It's not explicitly called out, but sort of is because it talks about that it is the school calendar year. That came up the last round, so I just want to make sure it's the 50/50 of the nine months of that.
It is not. It is the 50/50 of a 12-month SRO is the agreement that we worked out.
Okay.
Well, I want to thank the task force for their work. And I want to thank in particular, I want to thank Ally and Emma and Maggie for your participation. I think because you were the most directly affected by this proposal, it's terrific that you had the opportunity to be a part of the discussion and undoubtedly lent it a lot to that discussion though. So thank you for your participation in particular. I also want to compliment the task force on its relatively quick work. I think that you have tackled a really, really important issue that undoubtedly needed some thought, and you did consider it in a thoughtful way, but you also did it in a relatively quick way, which I think is important because I think this is something that needs to be implemented as soon as we can do it. I think it will add to our schools, make our schools safer, and I really want to thank the task force for recognizing that that could occur and for doing your work very, very quickly. But most importantly, I want to get back to Ally and Emma and Maggie and just thank you again for your great, great work, just a portion of which we saw tonight, but we're so happy that they were able to participate and undoubtedly went a lot to the discussion. So thank you.
I have two questions. One is about 14. We asked a couple of times to see a possible schedule, and I know it's impossible to predict minute by minute for a whole year what a person would do, but what discussion was had about that on a day-to-day basis besides number 14? What a person would do.
Yeah, one of the things we give pride in is the fact that throughout our work, we have been very transparent with all of the work that we've done. And in fact, the board received a couple of months back an example of a schedule, and we put this out to the community as well. I'm going to try to find it here for us real quick.
I think you went past it. It's the, no, correct. It's like the six or seven that I'm down. Yep.
So this was something we kind of just played with and made it a little bit bigger for you. And we pushed this out to the community and asked for their feedback on this. This was shared with the board around late June, and these are some examples of that. It's not all encompassing. Chief, could you put this together for us if I remember? Yeah, could you talk to us a little bit about this, please?
Well, we're going really one line by line. It was a sample of what could happen. In our job, it's not similar to a lot of jobs, but in some respects, it's similar to a lot of emergency responder jobs, like fire EMS, medical. You don't have a schedule necessarily. You come in for the day and deal with what happens. But if we're not just dealing with the urgent situation as it's arising, these are other things that are going to be done as a part of a daily or weekly schedule that the SRO would have. There's just a number of security procedures in the schools and walking grounds and parking lots, looking for security breaches potentially if doors aren't shutting all the way, controlling parts of the school, and then follow-up meetings with students or teachers that have brought things to our attention that require follow-up actions, parents with unnecessary lunch with students and maybe a couple more grades occasionally. We already do a couple of driver's ed demos a year. We go in and talk about driver's ed and safety of driving and then plan for weekly and daily activities in the future. It's just a number of potential daily activities that could take place, but you know, it's day-to-day operations for, like I said, law enforcement, other emergency responders. It's a day-by-day, you know, what's going to happen today type situation, more than planning a schedule, you know, 90% where they work in this meeting. It's not typically, because drives can get interrupted and have to do something else. But those are potential activities that they can be offered.
Are there other questions around?
Yeah, I have one more that I kind of felt I wanted to hear and see in the documents over the course of the meetings, and it's really for each individual person on the committee. I'm curious, what were the arguments you discussed in your committee against having one that you threw out and said, no, the need to outweigh those negatives? I mean, think for a second, let us know.
I think Ally.
Yeah, so I actually went to the community listening session and requested to be on this committee because I did not think this was a good idea for the district. My youngest brother is African-American and autistic, and statistically, those people have less success interacting with police, even in certain SRO environments. And so that and then just I wanted students to be aware of their rights, that if they bring something to the police, it's now a police matter in certain situations like sexual self-congratulation. I had a lot of concerns. Addressing the first one, especially with students with special needs, my concern was that having an officer in the building might criminalize a behavior that's typically disruptive or admirable. That's perfectly typical for someone who's autistic or has another behavioral difference from other students. And the chief was actually super helpful in discussing that with us. And ultimately, there is one officer who responds to a lot of the calls currently. Officer Xander is in there. She knows the students. She's familiar with different special needs that those students have. And for her having that kind of relationship, she can respond to the situation, and they can say, hey, it's this kid, and she has some background. So if that student is behaving in a way that would normally be perceived as threatening if you didn't have that background, you can have a context to know, like, hey, this is a threatening action. This is something that's related to their behavioral aspect of their disability. And so for me, having an SRO in the building was promising in that it would give those students someone that's there consistently, that they would have an opportunity to react positively to. And unfortunately, should they have an episode where something goes wrong, this is an officer who is familiar with those behaviors and who, obviously, all the officers are educated on mental illness and people with disabilities and behavioral differences. But for me, it was reassuring to know, hey, like, I'm looking at this kid who I care about. And it was helpful for me to know, like, hey, if he's not in his own personal space, if he's shouting, if he's doing this or that, that that's something that his teachers are familiar with, the officers are familiar with. And so it can be responded to in a way that's maybe more thoughtful of that. And as far as my concerns about students being aware of their rights and not bringing things to police that they maybe do want to go to court, again, the chief was super helpful in walking me through those procedures and the way the referral process works, mandatory reporting and things like that, just making sure that students are aware. And then the same policies are being followed where before we implemented an SRO, because there's an officer in the building so much of the time, at least from my perspective. Having an SRO doesn't necessarily mean bringing more officers in to respond to more incidents than currently are happening. It's just having one person who can consistently address those issues and maybe come out with a perspective that's a little more in touch with the student body.
Anybody?
There was another, that was a perfect response. I appreciate that. Another thing that was talked about was having the new SRO attend specific training, which some of us have had mental health training as part of our RIT service, four hours here, four hours there. Having some specific training related to the SRO that nobody else maybe has gone to so they're more prepared for the position. There was another suggestion of having a shadow SRO at one or two other districts before they start because it's a new program for us. And back to Gaudy also, and that all came from committee members. So we're certainly hoping to input as to how the program is going to be run. Another decision that was made was to have the selection committee made up of school officials versus the police department. So I will provide, well, I probably won't be there, but the chief will provide the names of the interested officers to the district, and the district will comprise a committee that may include the police chief, but the decision of who to hire for that position will come from the selection committee, not the police department.
Given to your question, we actually started our committee work based upon where are we concerned about this? Let's look at this from a critical lens. And there were probably eight or nine questions that we posed along the way that we took extra special time to address these. Before we even got to the question of, do we need an SRO? We wanted to take a very critical lens to this. And we looked at a lot of work that was traditionally not very supportive of SROs because it's from that lens that helped us understand if we were going to do this, if we were going to recommend this to the boards, making certain that it's a program that's applicable really to Mount Borah and our needs, not some cookie-cutter approach. So we see this as an evolutionary process, not necessarily revolutionary process. And you can see through some of the questions, not just in this additional work, but what are lessons learned from incidences in which SRO participation is not work? I think we all know of the horrendous experience down there in Marjory Stoneman Douglas in Florida. What were the lessons learned for us from that? We did not go into this with a, we're going to do this. We went into this from a perspective of, we've heard what the community says, but is this right for Mount Borah? And we got to that critical point in July when we realized that there was consensus based upon what we've been learning, that this was a recommendation we felt that we were going to do. But to not cheat your question, if you'd like, I'd be happy to continue to ask other folks.
Only if somebody has something that comes to mind.
I just wanted to point out that I kind of have two paths. I'm middle schooled from my school day to 3:30, but then I'm also a four or five hours high school when I go over to events. And when I first was asked to be on the committee, I wasn't 100%. I mean, maybe people would have thought I was because I know what the need was at the high school level. the high school level. But these 500-plus children that are mine from 7:00 until 3:30, that's how I look at them. I wanted to make sure that this SRO and the whole program and the whole process would not just benefit high school and high school-aged children, but it would benefit middle school and younger. And after being as a group with all of our meetings, I was very confident by our second meeting that this was a district SRO approach, not just high school-based, and that's what got me on board on the first one.
I'd like to say that I can attest that Stephen Obama, November of the year, I wasn't too optimistic about an SRO, just knew they wanted to push it right away, and I told Steve, no way in hell. You're going to do this slow, easy, and get all the facts rounded up and presented for a whole package so bad. All the Ts are crossed, all Ns are dotted. Keep your torch before us. I think you did a wonderful job. The final issue is Chief Joe Bollinger's job, identifying the right person if he has people on his staff right now that want it, that I don't know, I don't want it. But good luck to you. I don't know how you're going to make semester break work, but sometimes second semester, I suppose, this person will be here. And I'm all in favor of this.
I move that the board approve the task force recommendation to move forward with the SRO.
Second.
Motion, members, second to Jeff. Further discussion?
I have a question about contractual language. So there is this independent contractor. So in thinking from a parent perspective, are we encouraging our parents to contact them first if they're going to do it? Is this still policy of like chain of command where they need to start at the principal? How is that working in terms of parent engagement?
Great question. Thank you. The independent contractor language that you find in number four, page one, is really to satisfy any internal revenue services requirements of internal, excuse me, of the independent contractor status with the district? Really, what you're asking is, where do we go? We need help. And I think, again, the goal is to start with the school district. If there's a concern and we can solve it in the lowest level, so to speak, and I don't mean in a derogatory way, but if there's a concern happening in the classroom, let's talk about the future. Let's get their opinion first. If that can't solve the matter, then let's talk to one of our associate principals where that's applicable. And if that's not applicable, then on to the next. And then eventually, if there's a matter that can't be resolved, then the school resource officer and/or any member of the senior leadership team would be happy to assist the family.
So I have a question. The motion is to move forward with the process?
To accept the recommendation.
To accept the recommendation. So what would the next steps be?
So I'm wondering if I could ask a clarifying question to that motion, because the memorandum of understanding that's been drafted has been vetted by both the village, the village's attorney and the district's attorney. And I'm wondering if the intent of both Mr. Heiss and Mr. Hannah was to approve that MOU. And if it's not, then maybe we could have a discussion about what it would take for us to get through that MOU, or if it isn't, if we could, if they would be kind enough to consider an amendment to their motion to accept the MOU as its primary.
I made a motion based on what was on the agenda. I've looked at the contract. I mean, it seems reasonable to me. It does, it did appear to me to need some cleanups. So I think there's probably a little bit of work that needs to be done on it, but I'm not sure where that finds us.
If that's not a non-substantive change, the board has had this, I think, for a couple of weeks now. If there's substantive changes, then let's bring the MOU back. But if there's non-substantive changes, I would ask that the board would consider that received.
So I think there needs to be some clarification around some of the sections in general. My first question is actually to Nick, and I was actually discussing this with Randy. Is the police department a separate legal entity, or is it a department within, under the village?
The police department is a village department.
So the agreement is between the school district and the village, and the police department is not a party in the agreement, except for the fact that they are a party under the village.
Right.
Gotcha. So that preamble would need to change. So that's, I don't know, if you call it substantive or not, but I think it's a clarification that would be made. I think Leah's point about the emergency situations and absences could use a little bit of clarification, just so that we're sure what exactly that means.
Can we talk about that then specifically? As again, I had shared this with the board weeks ahead, so that we would be in a position to have feedback to this table at this time. So I understand that wasn't possible. Let's use this time now to get the specific language that you're seeking.
I think if the emergency situation is going to cause an absence, you need to know if it's more than, it's a more than three-day absence, how would that be covered? So you're going to need to tie the two sections together.
So my understanding is if it's more than three days, we have somebody else who's coming in to fulfill that role.
Right, so then you could just reference, the absence would be covered under section eight, right?
Maybe it's just because they're in a different place. Didn't go absences and then emergency. My brain went one first and then the other went. Do they go together?
Would flip-flopping seven and eight be amenable to the team? Does that solve your concern?
As silly as it sounds, I think yes.
Okay.
Because then it's like, this is an absence, and then there's an emergency. I don't know why my brain couldn't come together otherwise.
I think the idea behind the emergency was that there's some catastrophe, or you know, the whole world is like, oh.
But that's kind of then was my question. So if that happens, and it's longer than three days, are you even going to have a body to send if it's more than three days? So that's why I was wondering if they are in fact actually tied together, or if an emergency situation trunets the absence because it's an emergency.
And in that case, obviously, it's a large emergency in the village. Totally understand there would need to be, the officers would need to be pulled out, but I think we should just state that if the emergency is of a nature that requires all of these officers to be on duty.
I mean, it does say serious emergency, major investigation, unforeseen circumstances in the community, which would be a tornado. So, you know.
And just keep in mind, this position, if we don't have now, right now, it's a patrol officer, and the patrol officer that's on duty those six days and then three days off is usually the same person that responds at the time or six days before. This would dedicate an officer Monday through Friday, an additional position to what we have. And I really don't see it, I can see where a situation may occur if officers got the food for a week, and after three days, we put them in the bag. Other than a natural disaster, I don't really see something happening where we pull that person off in one or three days.
So maybe they really are two totally separated things? Like, there is emergencies, we're probably not going to have somebody because it is one of these emergencies and an absence if it's more than three days. So maybe it's fine.
And that was our intent, yeah? But certainly, is there specific language the board would like to see implemented here?
I think it was just more of a question in my mind, are they two separate things? I mean, they're written as two separate things, but were they really two separate things? And so they really just are two totally separate things? Which is fine.
What were the other ideas that people had thoughts about?
So uniform and equipment, you say, all your uniform and extracurricular activities. Is that the only time that the SRO would be in full uniform, or are there other?
We discussed that at the younger age groups, maybe for Halloween safety, maybe in high school under sacrifice day, or who under sacrifice present, but it wouldn't be necessary. But mainly with the younger kids, that was what was brought to the school, the village board meeting, as maybe an important time for younger kids to see an officer in uniform and know that's somebody they can approach, whether it's a firefighter, DMT, or anybody in uniform, if they can approach them, and they're not going to be afraid of them. That would be for the younger kids, mainly in those schools. But in the high school, the majority of time, when the officer's in SRO function, the higher grades, the high school, I would say they would be quite close if we discuss it.
If I remember correctly, I remember one other exception would be like if they had a court appointment at 11 o'clock.
Right.
They might wear the uniform during the day and then go, you know, representing a student or doing a student issue, they'd go, be there in their uniforms, and they'd go right to court quickly and matter of fact. So that could be another exception.
The routine would be quite close, but there would be occasional exceptions to the, about extracurricular activities that the uniform is required. That's going to be necessarily seen, I would think. Even when I went to PW games in the past, you had to wear a baseball cap, and then they changed it to a, had to wear a high vis vest the whole time. That way, you could identify one person out of the crowd. It's kind of the same way for a high school football game, you want to be able to pinpoint one person as an example. They aren't, it's just a neck badge, probably inappropriate in that situation. And if you get fans that are betting on Rui, you've got other non-leave options available to be able to pick a person or somebody short of the block to be starting fights. You know, you have other options, or what the tradition may have on SRO day.
I have one other question, and this might be a stat question, but so when we talked about the cost before, I think the numbers we looked at were 50/50 out of nine months. So do we have budgeted 50/50 for a whole 12-month?
Thank you for asking that question. When the board approved their budget this past fall, we shared that it really would be one quarter of the cost of an SRO.
Right, first.
That's right.
That's right. Okay.
And then we based that on approximately a $55,000 per year spend on us. That would include wages and bennies and these sorts of things.
Okay. I forgot the question.
That's okay. What's going on in your world? How about other things? This is really a minor one, I hope, please. I didn't notice a vehicle mentioned in here and a parking place. If we're going to provide one of those, I think we'd need one. You're exactly right. We, is it? I couldn't find one of those. Your uniform. Okay, thank you. So we have, they'll be using their own vehicles, and parking spaces is not a problem at all. I understand that might have been a hangup the last time the two entities came together on this. I think you've got leadership that's a little different and has gotten to a yes on this.
Okay.
Diane, I see you have lots of ideas. Ask away.
So cost standard and compensation. I guess I'm confused as to whether it's separate or we can just combine the compensation with the cost standard. It's confusing to me.
We've modeled this MOU after those of other organizations, about six different MOUs, actually, and they've separated them out. And I can't give you the exact reasons why they are the way they are. Suffice to say, maybe it's important enough to identify compensation separately unto itself based upon the cost standard, because at some point, you may change the compensation and not the cost standard, and vice versa. Would could we put both of them together? Might that solve your concern by putting 22 closer to 26?
I just think that makes sense. We kind of have it for better.
So maybe make 22, 25, and move things up.
Sure.
Very good. How about other ideas?
And this is just clarification, but you're talking on 13 about handling of the incidents that department policies that are referenced. I assume that's the police department's policies? But the SRO also has to comply with the school district policies, is that directed at all?
Thank you. So the state has specific requirements of how police are to investigate matters, and those are very different and unique than that of a school district official. In the event that there was ever a concern about an investigation, those should be parallel investigations, not investigations that are done collaboratively, because the burden of proof is different for a school district offense than it is for a police investigation. And as such, the police follow the laws of the state, and we follow the laws of the department of public instruction.
Okay, so they're following the police department.
Yes. An example of that would be reasonable suspicion versus probable cause. The extent to which a police officer can do a search would be based on probable cause, whereas a school resource, excuse me, whereas an employee of the district has far more latitude to conduct a search of one's positions under reasonable suspicion.
Okay, thank you. My last thing was the school district policies. So it says the SRO just hereby agree, and then through signature, but they're not signing this document, correct?
The signature is what we do with our policies that we share with our employees of the district, that they, every year, they get a series of policies about sexual harassment, bullying, intimidation, and the like. We would ask them, even though they are not employees of the school district, to make themselves aware of the procedures, protocols, and routines. And that's what that's referring to. It's not, it's not, it's just a meeting informed by our expected to get.
Okay, then let's just take figure by figure.
Okay, one was that?
That's a fine one.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to amend my motion. The move that we recommend, excuse me, that we approve, the recommendations of the task force and the memorandum of understanding as it's been amended tonight.
Motion by Jeff. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here.
Thank you. And again, a special note of gratitude to the team for their standing work. I think we met over five or six different meetings, several hours. By the way, Chief, Maggie Spitzbart has a fantastic Volkswagen Beetle. Just got it. And so if you happen to, you know, want to just give her a break, if she's ever in a car and a skew somewhere, that's the least we can do for all of us. Maggie, I kind of went into this probably being dragged a little bit from her friends, the Gunder sisters, and we're so grateful for your leadership as well. I did want to go without saying that as well, so thank you.
All right, I'll move back to six, the session. So move back to the session, item six to eight, this 2018-19 school bulletin.
Board members, we continue to work in order to honor the board's strategic plan. Recently, your administrative team has developed something called an administrative strategic plan that follows through from the board's strategic plan. But we'll talk about that, actually, on September 30th, two weeks from tonight, at our board workshop. I'm excited about that. As I am excited about the goals that our colleagues have put together within their schools around three of the board strategic plans, particularly learning and growth. Each building has developed after reviewing data, a math goal, and a reading goal, and then also a wellness goal. So I think, first things first, welcome RJ. How are you? Oh, excuse me, Sarah Straka. How are you?
I'm good.
Straka, come on, get us started here. Let me pull this up.
Anyone need more water? That's a little more, Josh. One?
Please.
Okay. Some air conditioning would be nice.
Thank you.
So, as Dr. Schlemmer said, the school districts, buildings, principals, staff, I believe, to create building goals. But the building goals really are underneath the end of all of our strategic plan. And as you know, we had revisioning of our strategic plan last year, the vision 2023 piece. And within that, we really wanted to define for staff, for community, for everyone, where we're going to go with that vision, if it were more concrete. So either our board workshop, we So we've had our board workshop and we made a goal. We're looking for it to be cited. So just a brief overview of what that looks like. So we have our strategic plan at the top. Underneath that, we have three lenses that we want to, as we move forward with any big box initiative plans, we want to consider questions, consider forward movements through these three lenses. One, looking at the idea of equity, which we've been talking about, a lot of the data, knowing that the board retreats. Moving forward with our professional learning committees, we've been making a substantial investment in that, our staff. So as we move forward with our big rock work, we want to consider how professional learning committees play into that. And then the icon or the graphic on the right has that well-being piece as well. You'll see that well-being piece for staff and students as we move forward as well. But you'll also see each building has a well-being goal as well. Within that, these three lenses, we want to continue our good work as a whole school district. So whether we want to move forward and make sure all of our schools are fully functioning with our TIA or PBIS system. Within that, then how does that affect and how do we look at how we grade our students and how we assess them? So whether we're looking at common grading practices or seeing on Facebook, call card. Along with that, looking at how our construction is offered. I mean, making sure all students are included. So we're looking at that equity lens, that co-serving piece of it. And then continuing the journey which the board received feedback on up there on last year, looking at how we're integrating technology and those innovative practices. So these are our four big, big, big drops that we're going to continue for the next four to five years. And then as the schools move forward, they'll be interviewing their building goals within these rocks as well as some additional work with the data and building of that as well. Within the, what was that, underneath, underneath my umbrella then, as the education community members know for sure, and as the board members will know, we have a curriculum and new cycle. We really try hard to stay on that simple. So some current, current initiatives that we've had that the board received reports on, whether it's working on our curriculum and making sure it's documented for everyone. Semester schools, as you know, we're totally working on the website. So looking at that. And making sure staff feels comfortable with our website. We'll be comfortable with that and make sure education and reading. We're adding something called fast bridge. We're really looking at how we're assessing kids, how frequently we're assessing kids and trying to get smarter with that. Because going along with that well-being goal, we want to make sure we're not over assessing our kids and we're getting the right information at first time. Social studies has come up. We're, we're starting, we're actually continuing our journey with social studies as this partner, Public Construction, has probably got those standards last year. Again, I have the professional learning committees, which we've talked about for a little more than that looks like in our school district. And K four language list is at the bottom one as well. We look forward to that. Some newer work. Play. Play, I think kindergarten level, came out of some work that was done by our mental health action coalition. It's one of the three main goals for that team. So the kindergarten team will be coming to see that forward education today to get an update on that. And we'll come to the foreword at some point as well. K five math, we're looking at coming to the foreboard this year hopefully. So you can talk about potential changes of curriculum resources that we're going to be using. Handwriting. Handwriting about tiers, we've been implementing for about three, two, three years now. So every year we're bumping up the program. So now we're up to third grade, looking at handwriting and applying more skills. While with handwriting is writing, looking at how we can improve our expectations and the frequency that our writing and the proficiency levels. And then the last case, looking at our health, curriculum health also came out of the mental health action coalition. So having a more of a structured concerted effort this year to bring a team together, staff, parents, school community members, team faculty, all the curriculum and see how we can intervene more health curriculum at other grade levels besides just grade six and grade nine, ten. Dr. Slano mentioned about our strategic plan and the three goals of each building. We'll be sharing with you tonight. The data we treat is is where those goals keep on. As we've had in past years, we look at previous years' goals, look at data and then create goals for the upcoming school year. So you're going to be hearing from each building. Starting with Rachel Johnson in a few minutes. Each building will be presenting last year's goals, the outcome of those goals, and then sharing with you just for a few minutes where they want to go with this year's goals in mind.
For your oral kindergarten, see that, that's usually coming in January, February. I'll be here with Nicole Teague. We will be working together on our presentation. For the early learning and primary center, we have a lot to celebrate from last year. And as we were diving into data last May and kind of capturing how the year went, we recognized why we were so tired. A lot was achieved. And as you can see there in our air, our literacy goal or our reading goal, we achieved that goal at ninety-three percent of our K two students showing active growth. You can see a breakdown there of how each grade level performed. And that's a trend. We tend to see smaller percentage at kindergarten, above eighty-eight percent is nothing to shake a stick at. It's very great growth and great achievement. Although in second grade showed that ninety-nine percent of our kids were able to show that active growth was, we were really excited about that. In the area of math, this one was tough for us. And one of the things we grappled with all year long is we are putting all our eggs in one basket of an assessment in not a way our kids typically demonstrate, showing what they know. And so we put it upon ourselves and just see in a minute how we're changing that. And really boots to the ground, one-on-one opportunities for our teachers to get to know kids and their skills. This one, we made growth, but we didn't make our goal. But I was happy to look at the data and really show the growth that our kids, if I look at an apples-to-apples comparison, the kids who were first graders two years ago now showed a seventy-one percent average or above rating on Operations Elder Great Thinking, which is an area which we have shown consistently over time struggling. They made a twelve percent increase the following year. So that again is a lot to celebrate. They ended at average or above at eighty-three percent of those kids. So same kids. So really nice growth. We have a pretty needy well-being goal. We have two of them that are dedicated to students and one to staff. And you can see in all those areas, we achieved our goal. We really wanted to focus on, again, focusing our time and energy on that group of kids, which is most of our kids who consistently do everything we ask of them. So really keeping things in a positive framework. We met our goal in our celebrations. We had eighteen at the kindergarten level and we had fifteen PC. For our student connectedness goal, we know the power of making sure that kids know they have someone they can go to. We achieved our goal. A hundred percent of our kids were able to identify a school adult that they would feel comfortable going to if they had a problem. We were really proud of that goal achievement as we all means all. And then in the area of staff, we're continuing to work at figuring out how we can best work together and be as cohesive as possible and using our time wisely and sharing each other's talents. And one of the ways we're doing that is moving into the PLC model. One of our baby steps we took last year was working on trust. And taking the trust survey and figuring out within that area, where, what areas we can work on to be better at being a team. And so the teams all completed this survey and it identified areas that they need to kind of target. And they spent time in every team meeting working at that. And we were very pleased with the effects of that in bringing those teams closer together to, again, support all students. So that's a quick synopsis of last year. Moving on to this year, I just need to note that the team I had brought to the table for our data committee was not my doing. It was a group of professionals who are passionate about doing great things for kids and committed to being our building team leaders, who are also dedicated to attending PLC and really have bought into this mindset. And so to be able to be around the table with people who have had the opportunity to learn from the groups like Mohammed and Cruz and some of those other great professionals, it was wonderful conversations that really dug us deep for this year and really proud of our goals. So in the area of literacy, we kept the goal the same, but we're looking at things through a different lens. Again, one of the things we did last spring was we took a team of teachers and we completely, from the bottom up revamped our schedules. And in that, honoring what the teachers really wanted to make PLC time or collaborative team time happen, we put our heads together and worked really hard to ensure that every week our grade level teams have fifty minutes of uninterrupted time within the school day to work and look at data. That was not an easy task, but it was accomplished by a great team effort and a lot of outside-of-the-box thinking. So that's part of our action steps is really diving into PLC and what this means and how we can support each other to support all students in growth. We have our math goal. We've reexamined. As I shared just a moment ago, we were using our measure of academic progress as our tool. Again, it can be one tool, but it should not be the one and only. And so we worked as a group to come up with our math committee, who our math interventionist has come up with math screeners. She just spent the last week in every collaborative team meeting, presenting the math screeners to our teams. And they're very excited to use this one-on-one time to really dive deep and about look at those foundational math skills that our kids need. And then we're putting that into a measure to allow us to identify student growth. So we think that is a much better way of looking at students as mathematicians. So we're excited for that coming ahead. And then our well-being goal, again, we have three different goals within our well-being goal. Two dedicated to students and one to staff. For students, again, we can't let all of this positive mindset we need to create for kids. But what a bunch of us were able to do was go to a training this last August for PBIS, PBIS Leadership Conference, and we took some great things away. Two big rocks we're going to focus on for PBIS, teaching and reteaching and positive descriptive feedback. So every staff meeting and through our collaborative team times, we are going to give that opportunity for staff to learn more about that and apply it. We can't expect kids to just know what to do. Or if you tell them that they did something wrong, automatically be able to correct the behavior. We need to take the time to teach and reteach. Our second goal in that is a social emotional profile. So last year we looked about student connectedness to adults. We needed to take a deeper dive. And one of the things we learned through our two playbook studies this summer that we did as a team is really getting to know students and taking the time to get to know students. So we have a ten-question survey. We're asking every kid, every kid one-on-one. This will benefit our student services team when we're trying to identify that kid that can't think of a strategy they would use to calm themselves down if they're upset. It allows us to figure out those kids who can't relate to a peer and be able to target those specific kids in supporting their needs. It'll also allow us to identify leaders in specific areas that we need to focus. So we're excited about that. We're going to do that twice a year. And then through the PLC process, we really want to support our teams in the collective commitments and building solid teams so that we can dive deep in the data, build those capacity within their team for trusting relationships, whether it's making themselves vulnerable that their kids are struggling or identify those things that they're doing well so they can share that and everyone can benefit from it.
That's been one of the most impressive things I've seen your team do since the start of the school year. Spending a lot of time around collective commitments. These are the things we're promising we're going to do in order for us to achieve our mission. And kudos to you for leading that charge. Hey Katie, how are you over there at the intermediate center?
We're doing well. All right. So looking at last year, for our literacy goal, we focused on informational text and helping students build those skills. In the math assessment, we can look at it by strand. And you can see we were within one percentile or one percentage of our goal across the grade levels. We were really pleased with that work. In math, similar to the K two level, we were also looking at operations and elementary thinking. Anecdotally, it meant, it was, our data showed us that was an area of growth as well as anecdotally, teachers in the upper elementary level were saying, like, in the class here, students were really struggling with their math facts and limiting their progress in higher level skills. And so we wanted to see if we could make some movement there. This is one where if you averaged the three grade levels together, we were just over seventy-three percent. So just under our goal. However, this is one we're going to come back to because we really feel like we are moving in a good direction with that skill area. For school, for student well-being, a year ago last summer, it was a pretty tough time at the intermediate center. And what we really needed to do was hit the pause button and just check in with ourselves. We've always felt that our student connections have been pretty strong, but we just needed to take the time and verify that. And so last year, our goal was related to increased connections. And we created a survey and focused our improvement on the connections between students and staff. And it increased across the board and we ended up with ninety-two percent of students identifying that they would have someone to go to. And so we felt good about that as well. So looking forward to this year, while we made good progress for the goals last year, we felt a little hampered by the way we wrote them, focusing on those single scale strands in math. Because as Rachel was saying, it's really, you want to be looking at multiple measures rather than just one snapshot of a student's growth. And so seeing some success the middle schools had with how they wrote their goals, we wrote ours similarly, looking and really wanted to focus on growth. And so we'll be able to look at multiple assessments and look at growth. In our action plan, the way we want to focus our steps is by looking at vocabulary instruction. Our reading teachers, Sherry Jansen and Shervani Hyneri, we're really recommending that some strategic vocabulary instruction is, can have a positive impact on fluency, vocabulary and comprehension, three, the five reading domains. And then we want to make sure that students were incorporating opportunities for students to practice those vocabulary terms. And so they're able to apply it more when they're reading it. In the area of math, this is the one area that we really wanted to continue our work. So we wrote our goals similarly to literacy, but our action plan is focusing more on math fact fluency. Diving deeper into the common core student standards and evolving our practices to align those best practices. And so we're doing it two different ways. Across all staff who teach math, we are going to be working with the same math consultant the middle school used last year. And he is going to be coming in four times throughout the school year, working with staff during their common planning time. And so we will be able to achieve some professional learning embedded within the workday. And then also to learn more about more updated strategies that can provide more access for all students as well as an eye to looking at the new math curriculum that we want to adopt to kind of stepping the stage, probably the teachers for some changes that might be coming up. Additionally, a smaller group, our math committee, in digging into the math fact fluency, while staff set aside time to practice and make, and to track student progress, when we really got into it, there's much more to up-to-date fluency strategies. And our math committee did a book study over the summer. And what they really would like to do is pilot some of those strategies so that when we want to roll them out to more staff, we have some people who have some field experience with it. It is more than just knowing the answers to the math facts. It's being able to apply a strategy that's appropriate and efficient and has some flexible thinking on it to understand how they got to that answer. So we're excited about that work. In student well-being, this is one where our team had some really good conversation. We knew that we wanted to continue to work on building classroom communities, that we wanted to continue that school connection with students. But then when we got down to what really gets in our way of doing that, teachers were on the table in the classroom said, some of the, a big speaking point is often when those peer relationships break down and there's conflict resolution. And so. And so what we wanted to do was we thought about our second step, social emotional curriculum that our guidance counselor uses and identify a strategy that he teaches once a week that we could put an emphasis across the school, across school, use it, practice it in a variety of different settings and have multiple opportunities to do that. It's a problem-solving step where students have to name the problem, think of solutions, explore the consequences, and then pick the best solution. So an example that came up last week was there was conflict on the kickball field and what it ended up looking like was shoving it in the name-calling, but the real problem was they didn't know how to pick teams in a fair way that they were satisfied with. And so if we can start working on the problem-solving and coming up with more productive solutions, we think we could have a positive impact on the school community. So those are our goals for the year.
When I think about change leadership and what we know about the best kinds of change leadership, they usually say it takes about three to five years for someone to find their sweet spot and they're being able to implement a vision. And this is year three for you, isn't it?
It's year three.
And let me tell you, you are doing just an absolutely fantastic job of helping bring about a collaborative field for that kind of change, which we know is important. These are very substantive, meaningful goals and you are to be commended. Thank you and thank you to your team.
Thank you.
Yeah. How about our friends at the middle school? What's going on over there these days?
Hello.
Hi Paul. Hi Lisa.
Thanks for joining us on this steamy night. Wonderful. Couple things from last year, just as you've heard Rachel and Katie, we really wanted to take our goals up last year to include multiple data points. So we sort of had been using math and math only for a number of years and decided we had lots of things from Renaturaly to Alex to other programs and things that we do on a regular basis here in the building to really be able to use some of those. So really our goal of last year was just to increase our growth in reading and in math. In reading, we did that in the majority of the building. There was some data we looked at, but we didn't quite hit that, those improvements, but we saw some significant improvements particularly with our most struggling readers, which was really positive in closing some gaps. So definitely some positive things there in reading. Math, we knocked that one out of the park. Kudos to our math department. They have worked really, really hard over the last couple of years to improve their practice and it's paying off and what students are actually doing. So phenomenal job with them. Our wellness goal has not changed since 2016. I think it continues to be important and we were shooting for 100% of our students being able to identify some strategies and we continue to be in that upper 90s, 90th or the upper 90s for that. One thing that we were smart about this year is we collected student names when we questioned them so that this fall we were able to go back to that 4% of students and make a connection with them and find out where did this latest walk the way. So that was, that was a big plus for us as we move forward. So we continue to do that in our ranking hour that we have set up for the last four years and that's not, that's not a real positive thing for our middle school kids. In the area of literacy and math, we decided to continue to focus on getting better from the previous year. So our reading and math goals are the same as they were last year, continuing to use lots of different data points, continuing to evolve as a professional learning community and really work collaboratively. I think one of the the meanest things that we are looking at doing this year is really spending some time in researching best practices to increase student achievement in literacy and in math. And then also implementing those, seeing how they can be implemented in other disciplines as well. Because unlike in elementary setting where you maybe have one teacher teaching or lots of teachers teaching math, in this whole building, essentially there's six of them that are teaching math. But what are some of the strategies or the practices that are found to best help improve mathematics that can be used in science or in a tech desk or in other places so that it's not just on the shoulders of our math department, but it's really collective throughout the building? So that's not, that's the math example. Literacy is the same thing, the same work that we're looking at. We need as well to start to implement some of those across different disciplines. So that's math for listeners.
And talk about our wellbeing goal. It's called, we've had this aim goal since 2016 and we continue, we continue to want to have that goal again this year. I know we've tried with you in the past and a third of our students are new every year. And so we think it's worthwhile to continue this goal. We feel this is really important, especially with middle school students and all that they are going through emotionally, that providing them with strategies to help them grow. We looked a little bit at our survey that we gave students at the end of the school year, maybe thinking about are we maybe asking our questions in ways that students maybe are understanding them? We looked back at some of the responses that we got from students and what was one of those, a cute one, I can't remember now.
There was a nap one.
Yeah, some of them were quite clear. But really, we're not really changing it much this year in terms of what we're doing with that. We are focusing, continuing to focus on PBIS as well through the school as well as last year we implemented a staff wellness committee underneath the school and had some really positive feedback from that. So we'll continue to work on that and kind of like the highest thing to help support the school.
Just to add to the survey piece of it, I think part of what we tried to do is ask students what stresses them out.
Right.
Because when we first sat down as a group and said, oh, these are the things we should teach them to cope with, we found out that we were really awed at what stressed them out. We thought it would be social media things or that type of thing, but it turned out like, no, we're really testing with it. Okay, well, can we give them some tools to prepare for those as well as deal with some reading or those types of things when they start to get anxious up? Anyway, it's been very calming for us, so we continue to do that.
Well, and that's the thing that's so special about what you two are doing is you are using the results of data that you're getting, not just from your students, but from your staff as well, and you're finding tools to help support them. An example of that is the outstanding work that you've done around mathematics. It's really served as a, I guess, an example for other administrators. We heard here from Katie talk about how she's going to use the same kind of resources to build capacity in her staff too. So kudos to you for not just resting on the laurels of high achievement, but then taking it a step further and digging down into how do we get at growth for kids? Because that's, we owe it to those kids to help them see, see growth year over year. So well done to the both and I'm so glad you're sitting in the chairs you are here at the middle school even when it's hot.
Thank you.
How about our high school friends? Good evening. Two new faces to the team this evening. Now we have Leon Arro DiCaprio. Doesn't he look like Leon Arro DiCaprio? Now, to Lisa Corcoran, of course. Our veteran of the team, how fortunate we are to have Special KHS High School, Colleen Nessine.
Good evening, Peter. Thank you. It's been a really great start to the year and we're really, you know, just excited to be here. You know, if you go over the data a little bit, last year's goals were the BHAG, what I think would be the term for big area of major scores. And you appreciate the BHAG, you appreciate people really kind of trying to make that big jump. And then with it, there are some things that you don't expect during the school year. You didn't expect some of the, the building had a tough impact on the students and their testing environment. There was a lot of things going on in the building that maybe were a struggle for students. And you know, our goals, our results weren't great. We asked that students decrease by 10% from the math and reading, the going below benchmarks. So we hope that goes up. Unfortunately, our students were below benchmark increased by 5% in our reading, 10% in math. And you know, there's a couple of different ways we can look at that. It's not always great to see that type of data, but we also, there are a lot of different factors like going when you're looking at one assessment, one benchmark. And so some of the things we're doing this year is how we administer the test, what the environment looks like in the building. I think just the fact that we could have this beautiful space in itself will create a whole new environment for our students and how we welcome them into the building, the things we provide for them. So we're really getting how we administer the tests and doing it the way that's welcoming. And then show me, really working with our staff, I think we'll talk about it a little bit, and tell students how meaningful this is and what we do with that data and what it helps us do in terms of programming and making those decisions. In terms of wellness goal, we had students, 60% of students and staff who identified did these two mindful strategies. And then at least 40% of the time reported on building a graded wellbeing survey. So we, 43 students took the survey last year, so we were looking at about a third of our students took the survey. But of those students, 9% of our students said they could identify these two mindful strategies, which is really great. 65% of the students said they could use mindful strategies and then 68% of the students who took it said they agreed or strongly agreed they have a positive connection to the school, which we're, which is great. That's exciting when we have students, but it's not, we didn't feel it was far enough. And so we'll talk a little bit about that when we get into our goals. So what we decided to do is focus on growth. I think what we wanted to do is we looked back at our data. We want to, we want students to really grow. And we talked about different ways that we can measure that, but sometimes just having growth is what we wanted to look for. So last year, 51% of our students had shown growth on their reading. And we're hoping that we can get 60% of our students show growth. I would love to say we think that's a doable, a doable goal in what we're doing. And so Lisa's going to talk about some of the steps that we're going to do to get there and how we're going to ensure we get there.
So the first thing that we have is providing training to staff around Edutimer. That's a place where all of our data goes to and it's a great resource for staff to do some pre-playing for students and different differentiation skills in order to ensure that all students need are being met. We currently already established a data wall within Edutimer that has been sent out to staff in order for them to look at sequential, or sequential data throughout the past couple years in order to do some different academic planning for their students in class. Additionally, we just launched our efficiency program, which is around our staff time, which is student-to-teacher access time. And that rolled out last Wednesday and it's had a really positive impact and vibe in our building so far, which has been really great to hear that feedback. So this efficiency program allows students and staff members the flexibility of requesting specific students and teachers can request specific teachers as well. So if they know that they have a quiz to retake or they just need more time on the assessment or need to reteach in their pre-teaching, they can request those specific staff members and teachers can give them as well for those pre-teaching opportunities. In addition to that, every Monday, we're going to have lessons that are more focused on whole child approach, mental health and wellbeing in order to continue to build our community within the high school as well.
Yeah, and when we looked at this data wall, I mean, a little bit back, we started looking at this data a couple of days ago and we were looking at, you know, three-year trends. We would see students who were green, you know, they were, you know, they were maybe benchmark, beating benchmark by quite a bit. And then last year, red, below benchmark, pretty consistently. Some students that we, I guess, they'll later be high achieved, you know, and they've met that. And what we realized, there was such an impact on some of the things that were going on that we now can feel like we have a little more control over too. So we know, we're really excited for this year being able to do the testing differently. But then even just, again, that space that we're going to have, we can have a really crucial part of it. One thing we also talked about a little bit is research-based practices, really thinking about Hattie's work and the different things that, John Hattie's has a ton of metadata on research and different things on what really impacts students' growth, what really impacts student academic achievement. And so trying to work with our staff on how we can help them look at that different, those different types of strategies and use those in the classroom. And you know, one of the things that we always think of is 72. 72 is, .72 is student relationships. Point four is kind of even lines, just general growth. Point four is a kind of average growth in that metadata. Point 72 is the one that to me is just relationships. You have relationships with your students, you really start, you'll see growth. That alone has a pretty, that's a pretty significant impact. It doesn't have to do with the academic piece, but purely about that trust. And I know it's something we're really going to focus on that, that Monday staff times in really personal terms of building that community. So we're really excited about being able to do that, bring Hattie's work into, into some of the things that they're doing. And so that's the math and the reading. And so you can see here in our math is to have 70% of students show growth. And again, we think the same steps are similar. We don't need to recreate the wheel. We feel heavy math and reading, the steps we're going to be doing, working with our teachers, giving them that capacity, giving the tools they need to link up with students is really crucial in how we implement the test. But again, we also know ASPIRE is one data point, it's one piece of data. And so throughout the year, our teams, our teachers are going to look at different data points and then sharing that. One of the things that Lisa talked about is each teacher is going to be able to see in their roster, students that might be struggling with reading or math. So if you're a social studies or a science teacher, if you're a noted student in your classroom, they might be struggling with reading. So right now, you can get on there and you can like help support that student right from the get-go as opposed to waiting for an assessment to come out later in the year, maybe a few years. So trying to get that data from Edutimer and teacher scans is something that we really will be valuable for the teachers. And then we need to go to our wellbeing goal.
Okay, well, as the veteran, I'm presenting the wellbeing goal, but and as you guys know, our school has, I've seen in the fourth plus years now, a lot of highs and lows in our building. And so I'm really excited with what we can do. And so I won't read all of this to you, but I was walking to the school today and I heard a student say to another friend, I love coming to school because it smells so new. And I thought, that's really awesome about what happens when it's not new anymore and that smell goes away and the sweat and everything, you know, starts growing. But so, you know, I, I'm excited for our wellbeing goal because we have so many opportunities this year. We do have this new building and it is really fun, but I think staff and they hit on this a little bit, I'm really excited for that opportunity. It's so fun to see kids take that time and sign up and be where they want to be. And I've heard kids say that we're being treated like grownups this year and that's huge to me because it's really already reflecting the attitude that I've seen already this year is pretty awesome. So you can see the goal there for the students and hoping that they can identify two students or two adults in the building. I really think, you know, with the staff and with, with the opportunities we have with our building, that's going to happen. Something that I also was really proud of our, our data team for wanting to do is to add something to incorporate staff. Again, we've had highs and lows in that building and 100% of our staff, we want to feel more connected. So we've got some ideas that we're working on. We already had one event before school started and we had everybody together for a social gathering. It was really fun and you know, we now have a staff lounge again. You know, we have these things that we haven't had for a while, little things that I hope are going to make a big difference, not to mention a really great addition with Cody and Lisa. I'm really excited and I have no doubt that we can make those goals too through wellbeing.
I so appreciate the fact that you're honoring the culture of the high school and recognizing that we need to continue to follow a word. And the steps that you've taken in order to honor that and to engage people has gone a long way. Also, I think that's really been helpful is that when we saw the original data come through on the literacy piece, all of us, Sarah Straka included, said, we can't offalize this data, we've got to do something about it. We were disappointed in the results of last year's goals. They are goals, they're stretch goals for a reason, the BHAGs, as Luis Cruz would tell us. But the truth of the matter is that it's not, it's not enough just to sit back and say, we didn't make the goal. Let's do something in order to get to a yes on the goal on the outcome. And you folks have really done an outstanding job of recircling the wagons, working with your team, developing a common collaborative approach to this. I'm confident we can get to a better spot as a result of that. Team, thank you. So glad you're here. And board members, this is our report to you for the upcoming year. President Brontimer was kind enough to take some time with us in the summer and talk a little bit about goal setting. At that point, she says, you know, I'd really love it if you'd come back to us at the end of the year to tell us where we're at with our goals and then we start the cycle again. But please know that if you would like for us at any point in time to provide any kind of update to you as the progress being made, we stand on the ready. We thank you for the support you've provided us in resources and in time in order to help us move these goals ahead. With that, questions you may have of our, of our team, please?
Questions? Great, very good. Thank you to all of the administrative team for putting this together. Very much appreciate the recap and then moving forward into your school year. Very well done. Thank you so much. All right, we've moved on then to Action 70, policy first reading, conducting research in schools, policy 94.
Board members, this would be a new policy. As we are continuing to build our relationships with the universities around town, we are wanting to develop a policy that the board could consider when conducting research in schools. We're fortunate in that we have a number of individuals who are connected to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, Edgewood, or Turbo and the like. And we have more and more people who say, hey, what can we do in order to learn more? How can we complete our graduate work? Or how can we do our doctoral dissertation? Some of us serve on doctoral dissertation committees. And so in order for us to feel like we are honoring that approach, we're asking the boards into consideration of this policy, which has been vetted through the education committee. committee.
I have one question.
Please.
Is it 894 or 893?
Oh.
It's 894 in the agenda, and I just want to make sure when we approve it, we're approving it right in the first.
My bad.
Thank you for that.
No, it's, it's okay, I just want to make sure.
This, I think, also speaks to the board's polit, excuse me, strategic plan on trying to innovate our practice. So much can be learned from people who are in the throes of learning at a collegiate level that I think can help make us better through innovation.
Motion to approve. Motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion?
First, I'd love seeing new policies about, surely about education, that's really amazing. I hope to do more level work like that with this board in the future. This is, this is, I don't know where it's at, right? This is great. Just in keeping the content format consistent with your other policies, sorry to interrupt, but seems to have a chance. Lowercase after colon is usually the standard now. Don't be linking verbs after colons, that would be like words like is, because the colon is. And then one space after each sentence period would be awesome too, sorry.
You're good, thank you for sharing that with us. We'll certainly make the adjustments as appropriate, yes.
I still don't choose words.
You mean, it's time to declare it.
I have one other question.
Please.
And I might have missed it, but do parents, do you like inform parents if we're doing research, and do parents have the option to opt out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Most universities have what's called an HRTP panel, which would require that of any sub, human subject, a review panel.
And that would be something that would be in our SRO and...
That's right, our administrative rates are exactly right.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have a motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff, further discussion?
I don't know.
Done? Sorry, am I very soon?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's no more discussion, we have a motion by Danny, seconded by Jeff, and the roll call, this is a first reading. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, policy guesses. Now we'll move on to 7C, policy first reading, unpaid meal charges, policy 762.
Board members, in order to bring this under compliance with the United States Department of Agriculture requirements, we're asking for a fine tune on unpaid meal charges policy. This was vetted through Finance Committee, a motion to approve.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jeff, further discussion? Here none, we'll do another roll call vote for this first reading. Damon?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, policy guesses. Now we'll move on to 7D, consideration of the high school flooring proposal, using savings on the referendum.
Board members, you may recall when we talked about some of the benefits of savings, we did talk about our flooring in the high school, and at that time I had presented this map to you. The light blue in the upper left-hand corner there represents the only area of the school that had not been touched by new flooring. In fact, it's the old tile system that you may remember. And if I think I remember right, Board Member Sailor said, "You know, hey, what would it cost us to, to just button up the rest of the entire high school?" And so we went to work with our friends over at Kramer Brothers, and you'll see a proposal for your consideration attached to this. It's somewhere north of 60, please hold it, 65,000 dollars, if I remember right?
63,500.
63,500, thank you. And you'll see the details layered behind that as it picks the ability to remove the old tile. We don't believe that there's any kind of issue with asbestos, as most of that abatement has been accomplished, and we would propose that this was amenable to the board, that we would go ahead and order this and have it on stock, ready to be installed in the summer, early part of 2020.
Second? Motion by Jeff, seconded by Leah, further discussion?
I feel like, as you pointed out, just for public record, that we did talk in committee about the length of time it would take this work and that that will limit access to that part of the building for a short time, which we appreciate people's patience with that after what they went through last summer and not being able to get into the building. It will be, can't predict exactly how long, but we want people to know that it will affect that, access to that part of the building, probably during the summer.
So well said, thank you for remembering. Some may be saying, "Well gee, why wouldn't you just do it over the holiday break?" Truth of the matter is, I think during this holiday break, there's really only three or four calendar workdays in between Christmas and New Year's Eve, and then spring break, a week would not be enough to get this spoke of work done. It looks kind of small on the map, but in reality, it's quite a large amount of square space that could work, a thousand square feet.
And we don't know how long it would take, but it would be...
I think about a week and a half is what you're suggesting, and so if you were to try to knock it out right after school ends, but before our kids get in, I think we could be in a good spot.
So motion by Jeff, seconded by Leah, further discussion? Here none, all those who appear to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to eight, substance comments. Here none, move on to nine, which is future agenda items. So I think we're on list, just to be honest.
I have another question too. Did the admin team ever talk about the level of reasons again, and certain ones that we need to be updating for that?
Yes, thank you. In fact, when the board meets in their workshop on Tuesday for tonight, we'll have an update as to what the feedback has been from our administrative team members. We've studied a couple of examples of statements that have been put out by boards around this topic, and which would be something for your consideration in the future.
Thank you very much. As always, you can email future agenda items to your student yourself. Moving on to 10, scheduled next meetings.
And President Vayame, just a quick announcement with regard to the safety and wellness committee and finance committee for October. Typically, our finance committee meets the second Monday of each month, but as you may remember, those of you who are followers of the finance committee know that this time of year, it's a little different, right Scott?
Right.
What's the reason for that?
Because we hit our official state of the month in the middle of October, so we need a little bit of time to be able to take that data and calculate our tax levy. So we traditionally have our second board meeting in October to be the last Monday in October, in which case that pushes up the finance meeting until sometime after the 15th of the month, so we can take that data and do revisions to it.
So we're looking at a finance committee meeting on October the 21st at 5:30 p.m. to be followed by the safety and wellness committee at 6:30 p.m. There would not be a board of education meeting on the night of the 21st, but rather, it would be the evening of the 28th, and that would be the night we'd ask the board to set them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Moving on to 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jeff, further discussion? Here none, all those who appear to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. We're here. Board members, we're on some things.